So to speak. And if it fails for some reason, something, you would just say start recording.
I know what that is.
It's the county.
Okay.
Referral back in like twenty five.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to open, open a public here. So we get offer them the option.
Yeah.
Can we, uh, please present what he's trying to do? Heck, I mean, Storm King's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna.
What I was, what I was gonna offer is, I think I'd like to do is have, not so full or brief ones.
Yeah.
Then go to Jason.
Yeah.
At least it's not a lot.
Yes, you didn't see.
Even if it is a mission.
Oh, oh.
Shouldn't be too.
You missed, remember that you, you couldn't make it, you had it personally.
Keep my.
Hey Manny, how are you doing?
Good.
Good.
Joe, you know, Joe.
Yeah, no problem. We're gonna have to go through.
The people in the mountain road who don't like what Storm King is doing, so we have to do.
Sure.
Due diligence.
Sure, we'll have a public hearing.
Trump, the Trump stuff?
If you don't want a big building next to their house.
Is it inside the?
It's inside there.
I don't know.
Heading a seventy two by one oh four, hundred and four, uh, size extra building.
Yeah, I know, but it's within their campus. It's like not right next to someone's.
Or they have site, they have setback issues.
I think their setback is only with like the state. But we'll see. I mean, that's why we have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. It's just, it's all process.
Right. Mm-hmm. But we were here a couple of years ago.
Yes.
Yeah, I was here.
I mean, I assault.
I didn't really have an office where they do the front.
Yeah. Right, right. Okay. Okay, okay.
And I'll put that on the left.
Okay, yeah, sounds good.
So I think, and we have Mr. Wellen. Uh, I don't see Storm King's school yet. I think.
They're pulling up now. Yeah, they just pulled in, yeah.
You haven't met John yet. He's the, he's the engineer for the design.
Oh.
And then briefly, let me just meet who these people right here are.
Yeah, mine is.
So let's just.
Don't complain, man. Uh, not as much. We can always make more.
I don't have any, I don't have any.
Yeah, they're existing and they don't have, this private doesn't affect.
Put it on my retreat.
What?
Okay.
Uh, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's Sean.
Yeah.
That's, that's what they said on the book, but I didn't get, I didn't even look into that. At this point, even if they didn't, those buildings are not being affected. I don't think we should.
Oh, so they're free.
Those buildings maybe even predate some of these on there. I don't know, but I wouldn't be surprised.
I've been in all of them. They're pretty old buildings.
Yeah.
They will not.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure. I, I just.
We could just, we could just, rather, if you don't wanna like make a big deal, we can just ask them to respond to you.
I'm good.
Yeah.
And then if, and then if we see an issue.
Hi, Jamie.
I think what we should do, so they don't get confused, send them the initial.
Okay, we're gonna start in about a minute.
Can get on the same page. And then once we clean it up, we send it to the B E S or probably that way.
So.
And not on the last day.
So, but this is the thing too.
I only, I only got that in the status.
Really?
I.
Oh, my God.
So Chanel, Chanel said.
Oh, hi. No, it's right there. I was gonna do it right after the meeting. Okay, is that fine? Cause I, I wanted to talk to Manny about it before I signed anything.
Not, not that she did anything wrong. We might have to move this. Cause Kelly, I got Kelly's email like eight thirty last night. She stayed doing that.
Okay, if everyone can take their seat, please. Okay, good evening, everyone. We will call the order, the Village of, uh, Cornwall on Hudson's planning meeting for the twentieth of May, uh, twenty twenty five for at seven o'clock. I made it right on time. Uh, what we have is, one member is absent, but we still have a quorum, so we're still good to move forward. And we have four items tonight. Uh, the first item is our minutes. Have the board members been able to take a time and, and read the minutes?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? Gary, second?
Oh, second.
Second, thank you. Uh, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, minutes approved. Second one is, uh, an extension request from W and B Realty. Uh, Mr. Wellen, Tommy?
Yeah.
Why don't you just kinda go over real quick what you need?
All right. Um, I'm Tommy Wellen with W and B Realty. Uh, we had an approval back, um, maybe nine, nine or ten months ago. We're looking for a six month extension from now to, uh, keep the approval current with the barns that we're gonna remove and put six garage bays with two apartments above that. It's gonna be about twenty-two from front to back and eighty-five feet in length. And, uh, we're working with the, uh, D K Zergian, uh, from the Cornwall, uh, or Donahue Farm Committee. He wants some of the, the barn wood, so he's taking a look at the barns. I applied for demolition permit and, uh, spoke to Manny about that. He did a site visit. So we're looking to get an extension for six months to remove the barns and in the meantime, get the plans finalized and drawn for the reconstruction.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I go to, uh, Mr. McKay, does any of the board members have a question for Mr. Wellen? Mr. McKay, can you talk a little bit about the extension?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Wellen's requesting a six month extension. Um, the, uh, the code permits, um, those extension requests. Doesn't have any criteria for the board to determine. It's up to the board's discretion. I have no legal objection if the board wanted to go ahead and grant the extension.
Okay. Any concerns from the board on the extension?
No.
Do I hear a motion to approve the six month extension?
I make the motion.
Second, second. All in favor? Aye? Approve the extension.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Okay, next we have is, is, uh, the site plan review from Storm King, Dire, Dire Hall. And, um, they're doing a renovation and an extension. Uh, Mr. Fuller, are you gonna?
Yes, hi.
Give us a quick overview? Thank you.
So we, uh, we were last before you in, uh, in March with a pre-application. And since that time, we went ahead and put together our full application and submitted, um, among other things, uh, a full set of documents, site documents, as well as a fully A F and cover letter and, and there's been some standing, what I'll call preliminary architectures of the building, although they're not anywhere near final at this point in time. And so we've submitted the full application. The content of what we had presented to you in March still stands about the purpose and, and design behind why they're looking to do this, uh, alteration in, in addition to their Dire Hall, which is a classroom building. Um, and so there's a need to get additional classroom space and larger classroom space, uh, from what is currently at the, at the current Dire Hall. And, and I know both Lisa and Jamie are here and they can certainly speak to the current construct of, of the school and, and what its needs are. Um, but we wanted to begin the, the process of, of, of moving forward with this application. Um, there's, it, there's certainly a desire on their part to move it as, as quickly as we can for, uh, for purposes of working with their donors and, and, uh, and certain fundraising requirements, but, um, we have before you now a full application. I did receive, um, a copy of Jason's letter that he, he, uh, sent to me, and I can speak to any of his comments that he has in the letter, um, here tonight. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions, or if you wanna take the time to go through Jason's letter, we could do that.
First of all, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And before I open it up for the board's questions, I'd like to get, uh, Jason, would you give a quick overview of your, uh, thoughts that you provided, Mr. Fuller?
Sure. So I think, uh, as John mentioned, it's a pretty complete application at this point. Um, we had some comments that, uh, really were related to storm water.
Mm-hmm.
A few comments that are related to clearing. We can go over any of these details. And there's a, a few comments just in the way, uh, some of the materials are presented, like all of the parcels should be, that are owned in, in the same ownership should be presented together, just so the board has a full scope of, of what's owned by them. But other than that, I think in general, it's, it's fairly complete. There was, um, some existing non-conformities that exist, John. I suppose, probably pretty old, right?
Oh, yeah. There, there's obviously some buildings on the property that are, don't meet certain, uh, what we call yard regulations, you know, as far as setbacks, but they, they've been in existence for, you know, we could probably go back through the history, but it's several decades at least, um, since the school's been there for so long, but yeah.
And then the, the parking area is for the, the classroom buildings, I'm assuming, right?
So, yeah, so the clarity on that is, and, and I'll, and I can allow either Lisa or Jamie to speak to that. I mean, the purpose of the, the class, um, the parking area specifically, uh, is to accommodate larger events, like when, uh, there's certainly graduation or other gatherings at the, at the campus, as well as maybe sporting events. Um, and it's also to accommodate daytime staff. So they, they certainly, they have staff that, you know, comes from offsite onto the campus and they need places to park. And so that, uh, isn't necessarily for student population by any means. Um, it's, it's for daytime staff and, and larger, uh, events that, um, that occur at the campus to accommodate the, the need for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I addressed one of the comments that was in the zoning satisfactorily, I think. Uh, we had some comments on seeker and the determination. I'm sure Joe will speak to that, uh, if, you know, I've had a chance to speak. Uh, there was a couple of small revisions on the E A F, and I think the E A F should reflect the total acreage owned by the, the group as well.
Mm-hmm.
And then really just some cleaned up stuff in, in the plans themselves.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in terms of the grading and how the storm water will function and making sure that it's not affecting any, uh, other buildings on the side or any buildings offsite or joint stuff. It's early complete at this point, I would say.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Chris, do you have any questions?
Well, I, I did just have a point of clarification. So it hasn't changed significantly from the last time you were here, correct? Uh. There's more detail.
Uh, yes, there's far more detail, but yeah, you're correct.
Well, so we just approved minutes that said you were, last time you were asking for forty parking spaces and now it's down to sixteen? Is that right, or did we have it wrong?
No, no, it's, it's forty.
Forty-two.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Where am I getting this? I saw, I saw sixteen somewhere.
When I read, uh, something in these documents, they asked for forty-two spaces.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's thirteen, thirteen, and then.
Yeah, there's, there's an aisle of thirteen, but yeah, it's, it's like, it's forty-two, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I, I just, I don't know who to direct the question to, but if there's, um, if it's not conforming as far as certain setbacks, how does that work as far as our approval process?
Well, it seems, it, it seems as if these may either be pre-existing or there may be other, some other variances granted at some other time, perhaps. So if you can just respond to that in, in writing in Jason's comments, if they're all pre-existing, non-conforming, you know, variances are needed, we'll, we'll take a look at that issue. That, that's what we believe at this point.
Okay.
Any comments on it, Mr. Cornwall?
No, I agree. When I did the review, I, I didn't think that it was any, any variance required for the setback. But definitely a good idea, as they mentioned, to address it, just to keep it clear and keep it on the record that they saw pre-existing condition and they not being affected by this particular project.
Okay.
Therefore, there's no variance required, but we wanna make sure that we address that.
Just double check that.
That they're, they're okay.
Good point. Thank you. Chris, Mr. Pitt?
So, a couple of things.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, based on, uh, your request of seventy-two by one oh four.
Mm-hmm.
That's the addition, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So that adds up to seventy-four hundred and eighty-eight square feet.
Correct, yeah.
So according to the parking code, it's two hundred square foot per parking. And that leads to about thirty-seven in the parcel. Does that matter?
Well, I, the only thing that has Manny looks, it, it's, we can look at the total parking for the entire property, um, but the uniqueness of, of this particular project, you know, the square footage that you're alluding to is for classrooms, which is dictated by students who don't drive. And so a lot of it, um, as I've indicated early on, the purpose for the additional parking is to relieve larger events and, and daytime staff to provide adequate parking for that.
Okay.
Which would be teachers or, or other administrative staff.
And Manny's okay with it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, second question I have is, now this is gonna sound nitpicking.
Yep.
Uh, are these students, uh, are they, what's the percentage, is the, is the number of residential students going up?
That's a good question. Do you wanna speak to that?
With the building of this building, this is to accommodate our current population. The, there is a master plan for growth over time that may increase over time. But right now, uh, there's not a plan to significantly increase the number of residential students. About seventy percent of our students are voiding currently, so.
So there is a requirement by D E C, like it's a seventy-five gallons of water per person per day. So that is not affected, right?
Yeah, so they have standing, uh, what we call speedies permits. They, there was a, in fact, the last major project that was before this board was for the sewage treatment facility that they have on site, which was designed for twenty thousand gallons per day. They're using just about a third of that capacity right now with their current po, uh, population. So they're using about eight thousand gallons, but they're approved for, uh, twenty thousand gallons per day.
And yours, is your supply town water or is it well?
It's village water.
It's village water, yeah.
And village can supply that extra water that you're gonna need?
Um, I have not asked that question. I mean, I know the sewage treatment is designed for twenty thousand gallons. It, it does have village water. I'm, I'm, I mean, we could, we could.
Water, right?
Yeah.
So if more number of students come in, they're gonna use more water?
Yes, although again, this project is not, we're not, uh, in short term increasing enrollment. This is to serve our current enrollment. So this is to be, we pressure on classrooms that are too small and as it currently stands, uh, and accommodate our current population. Uh, any plan for growth, we need to involve additional dormitory space. And then we can come back to. We always consider that, so.
We did, we did, uh, make a request in item four, the general comments, that John demonstrated that the sewage capacity exists, which he has orally.
Yeah.
Just noted. And, uh, I could speak to the waters to some degree, and there should be sufficient water for up to the twenty thousand gallons if needed. That's in terms of portable water.
Supply standpoint?
Pardon?
From supply standpoint?
Yes. In, in terms of portable water, I can't, yeah, I, I don't know that pressure or flow would be available for, say, fire protection, but that's a different story.
You have to have water for fire protection, right?
Sure. And I'm so, talking sprinklers, but this building is not sprinkled.
Uh, so right now, there is no issue with water pressure. I haven't heard anything from the fire department for any situation in that area. Like I said, the building by now is not being proposed to be sprinkled, but if it is, that's something that a water flow test has to be provided. And if there isn't, then they can provide a pump if necessary.
Manny, the, the, uh, water department and the fire department both received these plans.
That is correct. Yes, sir. Yes.
Mr. Trainer was here last meeting, and I don't, I don't think he mentioned anything.
I'm sorry. I, I take that back. They didn't receive it yet. When you set up the public hearing, that's when we're gonna send it out to, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else? Gary?
Nothing.
Oh.
I have a question. Um, in Jason's comments, there was a reference to essentially demonstrate whether or not you needed to comply with our tree preservation law. And there might be some disturbance. Is that right?
It was just a little hard to tell John where the, where the pond was, if there are trees that are gonna be removed there or not, so to look at that and go.
Yeah, I, I noted that in the review letter. Um, I'm happy to do a tree plan, just identify exactly what would be removed and, and we certainly, from a landscaping perspective, would propose to, for every tree we remove to replace it with one. And, uh, so, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll prepare that. There's not a lot. I'm gonna talk in terms of several trees. You know, I don't know, I have an exact count tonight, but we're not talking dozens and dozens of trees. No, this would be just several trees specifically.
Yeah, if you could document that.
Yeah, we'll document them.
Okay. Mr. Cornwall?
Yes, go ahead. Have you, have you looked into how many trees?
Well, that's what we're speaking to. Uh, tonight I'll say it's several, you know, whether it's six, eight, ten, I'm not sure, but.
I'm guessing you'll have a.
I'll give you an exact number, yeah. We'll do a tree plan, which will delineate, delineate what trees, their diameter, the type of tree. That way you know, and then, like I said, we'll, we propose a minimum of one to one. You know, whatever we take out, we'll, we'll add back in in a different, uh, location.
And just, and just so you're aware, very recently, in the last few months or so, the village did adopt a tree preservation local law. So when you do that analysis, I think we'll be able to tell, uh, whether you're within, uh, the, the new regulations or, uh, and have to make some further, uh, filings or not. So that's the point.
Mr. Cornwall, any questions?
No, I'm, I'm good.
You're good?
Yes, sir.
Oh, Mr. McKay, could you talk a little bit about the, uh, SEQA and lead agency?
Sure. So this is, under the SEQA regulations, this is a, a project concerning edu, standard educational activities. It's less than ten thousand square feet, if I understand correctly. That would make it a type-two action under SEQA, meaning that this board, uh, would be the lead agency. There's no other agency that really could be the lead agency on, on this project. Uh, you would be the lead agency. You would take the step to state that the application is subject to SEQA review. You could make a finding that it's a type-two action under SEQA. No further environmental review needs to be conducted. And I prepared a draft resolution that I handed out and which I circulated earlier today. That draft resolution state, uh, would make the board the lead agency. It would designate the application as a type-two, uh, application under SEQA. And then the board, if the board is comfortable, it could determine whether or not it wants to move forward to schedule a public hearing on this matter. But, but when you get to that issue, just remember that it does also require a two thirty-nine M referral to the county. So, um, if there are gonna be any, um, modifications or updates based upon Jason's plan, you know, comments, we'd like to get those so that, that full report can go to the county and the county can make its appropriate comments.
Do any of the board members have questions referencing the topic we just discussed, title two, and then, uh, lead agency, any further? Feel comfortable. Should we take a, a, uh? Go ahead.
Joe, is it legal for me? Is it legal for me as a board member?
Yes.
Like ninety percent of the pro, things I vote on, I personally go see. Like I already book, walk the next property, next, next.
That's why you're on the board.
So can I like go there and see the, try to visualize what they're trying to build?
Is lo, well, it's, this is kind of public, well, it's private. It's a private school, but as long as they authorize you to, to come in, walk around, you're free to do so, which actually.
I would love to have you come in if it does.
I'll, I'll make an appointment. Uh, it makes it easier for me to vote.
Well, it is, it, it's a good question, actually, because the members, I assume you can just kind of drive onto the area? Is that?
You can certainly drive.
No, I don't wanna drive on.
I'm gonna sign the time and I could walk through the building and, and.
Just an outline. I don't need every foundation pillar or whatever. I just need to be able to visualize what I'm looking at.
So if any of the board members want to take, uh, you know, review the, the proposed area, um.
It was very helpful. I did it.
Yeah.
I called, walked the property and took a look at everything. So it's very clear. So I, I encourage.
I'll make an appointment. Thanks.
This is a school, so it's, I would consider it a little bit differently, but generally, anytime an application is made, there's a consent. Cheers includes it, at least for Manny's purposes, that you guys could enter upon the property to, to see what's going on. And that is included in your application, your building department application, and it generally is included in the municipality's application.
Thanks.
Okay, now I'm not looking at Mr. McKay. Should we take a motion to, to, um, I would offer, provided to.
Well, before, before you make the motion, let's, I would suggest to discuss the first thing.
Propose action?
Before, before you make the motion, again, the, the draft resolution designates this board as lead agency, designates the action as a type-two, uh, and authorizes the referral of the application to the Orange County, uh, Department of Planning. Now, we have to refer it over. We have to wait thirty days for the county to give us their comments. So the likelihood is, it's a short time period before the next meeting. The, if the board wanted to, it could schedule a public hearing tonight for next month. The likelihood that we would get the county referral back is, it's iffy. It's iffy. So if the board were to schedule it for June, we would come back, open the public hearing. If we did not have the county comments, we would not be able to close the public hearing.
Okay.
So it's really the board's pleasure, whether you, a couple of options, you could hold off on scheduling the public hearing, or you could schedule it knowing that you may have to keep it open, or you could schedule it for July. I don't wanna give you too many options, but that's.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
I, i, is, is there a project start date in your mind?
So we've talked about it. Uh, this is gonna be slated for twenty twenty-six. Um, we obviously wanna move through this process um, for, for personal reasons or for, for the school's reasons, um, as it relates to their goals, but, um, we're, we're looking at a twenty twenty-six start date, so.
So if we don't have that approval, it's like we're not delaying them, build, starting building.
So Joe, should we schedule the public hearing without us having a pretty good understanding, the board that is having a pretty good understanding of the, the tree removals, or is, does that change anything?
Explain that in the.
Well, in, in the public room, but I'm saying, should we not understand that prior to the public hearing? Like, now we're gonna find out about the tree removals at the same time as the public, so.
We don't have to vote for them at that time, if we don't understand it.
So what we could do is gather information from the public, get the information on the tree, look at it all.
And then come back.
We may not make a decision, but we have to keep it open until July, then we can make a decision in July. Is that correct?
That's, that's certainly one option, right?
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
And you're, you're comfortable, you could respond, uh, to the outstanding comments, get something in?
For the next.
For the next meeting, absolutely, yeah.
Well, and it's not just for the next meeting. You know, we would like to at least get your responses before we refer it to the county, right? Because I think Jason needed, uh, some tweaks to the E A F, I, I believe.
Yeah, we, we could, uh, I mean, what, what's a deadline? I mean, if we got it to you this week?
Yeah, I think, I don't think there's gonna be too much substantive change on the plans, right?
Correct, yeah.
So I think you should update the E A F and supply, you know, the fresh E A F and any updates that you can make in between now and then on the plans, maybe show that tree line, or you could just go out there, count how many trees. I don't need to have actually an arborist or anything, if it's just that few of them. And then now the submission is digital to the county, so it should be able to be expedited that way.
Like we could, we could get enough revisions prior to this, this calendar week that we can get it off to the county for, for referral.
Okay. Other questions? So I'm, I'm gonna ask the question of two actions. First, we need to take, make a decision on classification of a proposed action as title two.
Type-two.
Type-two. Um, and then the second one would be, we have. And then, the second one would be, we have another discussion on a public hearing on the, in June or in July.
Right, so, you should, you should have the resolution there in front of you. First section basically designates the board as lead agency, that you should do. It refers this to the county, that you should do. It designates this as type-two, that you should do. And then, really, it's the last paragraph, which sets the hearing date, so the only question is, are you ready to schedule a public hearing? And if so, when do you want to start it?
Right. Okay, so, the motion would be to classify the proposed action as type-two action, and then.
Designate the board.
Then yourselves as the lead agency.
Lead agency.
That's the, that's the first motion.
Yes, I mean, the way I.
What we want, we're not gonna tie it all together.
We could just adopt this, couldn't we?
Well, that's, right. I'm not trying to be too obtuse about it. Right, so the draft.
Adopt the resolution of the planning board for the Village of Cornwall, designate itself lead agent, an application for the Strong King School?
Yes, yeah, I think so. And, and again, I left a blank for the public hearing date. So, if the board wants to go forward in June, fine, or July, it's just completely up to you guys.
So, the motion is to adopt the resolution.
But you need to say when the, when the hearing is gonna be.
When the hearing is.
Right.
Okay. When would you, when do you think the, any, any comments on the hearing? June or July?
June is good.
I think June is, is the right thing. We could always keep it open. We, we get the work done, we hear it, we hear what the public's saying, and what makes the decision. Okay. So, do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution, and for a public hearing on, I believe it's the 16th of June of 2025?
Yeah, it should be the 17th.
17th of June?
Or Tuesday?
Yeah, it's the 17th.
It's the 17th, okay.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
All right, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good.
So, we look forward to having a public hearing?
Yep.
We look forward to bringing some more work in?
Yep, we will.
Okay, we'll go forward.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
I wasn't catching it, Joe. Lastly, we have a pre-application for Nine Avenue A residential property, seeking a minor subdivision. Mr. Buckley?
Yes, I think so.
All right, did you go through a little bit what you're trying to do here?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Buckley, before you start, I apologize. Hi, I'm, I'm Joe McKay, we exchanged some emails. I just wanna let the, the board know, I had an exchange with Mr. Buckley. This goes to whether or not my firm can properly handle this application before the planning board. We have discussed the matter, we have exchanged emails, and to the extent that there could have been a conflict, it's not clear that there was, but to the extent that there could have been a conflict, Mr. Buckley has waived that potential conflict in writing. So, I will be proceeding to represent the board with respect to Mr. Buckley's application.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
Yes. All right, so, Nine Avenue A is, it's a existing house, it's an existing funeral home on the same lot, it's a, a regular lot. Never knew much what to do with the whole setup of this, what it was, it never felt right, anything. It's in a residential, beginning of a residential street. Both have their own sewer, water, and power, completely separate, completely separate accounts, completely separate everything, piping, directions, everything. So, what we're looking to do is, is keep the house as-is, and the funeral home turn into a residential house, in the same footprint, with the same foundation, everything, and as much as we can keep. Basically, moving the roof of the house would be the pitch of the roof, so that a second bedroom study could be fitted. So, basically, the members from the, from our Hudson came to me, and have been looking for housing. They're renting right now, two of them, right here. So, it's three generations, my mother-in-law, my brother-in-law, and my nephew, who's not here, and their families. My nephew just came back into town, married, he was born on Clark Ave, and he's renting right now, they're looking for a house in the area. My brother-in-law sold his house in Cornwall Low, the COVID, and he's looking to get back into a house, but he's been searching to stay in the area. So, he's renting in Cornwall Hudson, and my mother-in-law is looking for a one-story house, 'cause she is worried about the stairs. So, that is the whole concept of what is over there. Nine Avenue A is the house and the funeral home, and then, there's also, that's not in this presentation right now, is the, the lot that's next to it, but just to see the whole picture, the lot next to it is 50 by 125, which is about, in a 200, 100-yard radius, probably dozen or so lots are like that, most of Avenue A is like that, and Hudson Street, around 50 by 100. So, we definitely need variances for different setbacks, but because they're not square lots, it gets a little crazy on how things are situated, you know, because you're looking at corners and weird angles and this and that. In terms of footage, you know, comparable to all the other neighbors, it's consistent, if not bigger. Anything I'm leaving out?
Is there anything on Lot 24 right now?
Which would be Five Avenue A? There's nothing on, it's just grass, yeah, just grass.
Anything else before we, before the board?
No, just trying to figure out the best way to go at it, you know, and, and, and this is where I arrived at, but it's still, like, there's other directions, but it's just, there's, there's this and that, there's so many, it's like a catch-22 every which way you go.
Sure.
So, it's, it's like, okay, just jump in, and let's see, you know, if it's something that works for them, or for, for us, then, great, you know, or, see what we can come up with, I guess, I don't know.
So, for the board members, this is a pre-application, and as Mr. Buckley just mentioned, he's looking for some guidance from the board of what direction we might wanna go, as far as when we look at this particular request, and the bigger picture, which you just mentioned with the adjacent property. Kristin, do you have any particular questions?
So, I don't know if this is before us now, but have you considered combining 23 and 24, and subdividing the combined property?
I did, I looked at it, it also, it didn't give, it still leaves, because of the way the angles are, and everything else, it still leaves, you know, just not a clear set, you know? Because the funeral home is where it is, and the house is where it is. So, without basically just removing the whole funeral home, and then combining the lots, and trying to, you know, juggle it, it was leaving the funeral home there as-is, because it's, to me, it's a good foundation, it's got the water, it's got the sewer, which everything's there already. So, it's trying to utilize that, or is it, do you leave the two there as-is, and then just build on the, which is 24? Do you build there? And then not utilize the funeral home as a residential house, you know?
So, you would potentially wanna come back for the planning board to, or to the building department, to build on Lot 24?
Correct.
So, there would be multiple variances required, I suppose, on Lot 24?
Well, Lot 24, I think, works, I mean, in terms of setbacks, your, your, your front yard, your rear yard, and your, your side yards all work, to the size of the house. 'Cause you're a 50-foot wide lot, I think you end up at, at, it's per foot, times 50, it's like four inches, time of whatever, so it comes to about 17 feet. I believe with the 10, 10 on one side, and seven on the other, which we could easily do 15 on one side, and 10 on the other, with the size of the house, so it would be above what the setbacks would be, side yards. And the front would be 30, and the back is easily 30.
Was there ever a home on that lot, 24?
Yeah.
Was that, is that, I mean, how did they create a lot, if there's, there's no home on it?
It's, it's definitely the same size as the existing lots on the, the street, you know? But I've never seen a, a house there. There was a tree in the middle that was probably 120 years old, I mean, I'm just guessing, it could be 100 years old, but it was enormous. And, but I, I don't know why the next lot over became so irregular, and almost like a flag, it just started getting real crazy and out of direction, I think people just started, whatever was built originally, people started picking and pulling and changing, I guess. So, it came this, this awkward-shaped lot, that kind of wraps around, and then had a funeral home and a house.
Right.
Sean, which one of these lots comes to Hudson Street? The one where a couple of years ago, you were here?
That's not on there. That would be.
That has nothing to do with this?
Yeah, has nothing to do with that.
That's 102.
That's a commercial lot. Yeah.
Okay.
Where is it?
This is, this faces Hudson Street.
Okay.
Yeah, so, the, the thought process kind of was that, all right, so you have Lot 24, that someone could build on, if it was sold, and then, there's still the funeral home sitting there, as a funeral home, and then the house. So, it was basically making the funeral home somehow usable. Is it two family pieces of property, or is it two separate pieces of property? I don't know. But I also know there's not much housing for people that do wanna stay in the village. I know with my family, that was the issue, trying to keep everyone in the village, 'cause it's really nice, to keep everyone close by. And what's out there, obviously, existing homes, price levels are insane. And on that street, most of the houses are very tight together, like 21, which I think came before here, a couple of years ago, maybe around 2020, 2021. I think they're, got a variance for seven foot on one side of the house, and maybe they tried for seven and a half feet on the other side, but ended up with 10 feet on the other side.
That's a little blue house, right?
Yeah, it was a modular, yeah. But you could see, it, it fits into, you know, just the way that block is, everything is around 50, 50-foot, you know, widths, by about 100 feet, especially on the opposite side of the street, it's about 100 feet, from painters all the way down, well, from the old school, all the way down towards, like, Homeland. Most of those lots are 50 by 100, which would be that 24, which is Five Avenue A, which is separate tax bill. And then you have Nine Avenue A, which is the funeral home and the house, and then it jumps to 21, as an address. So, I don't know where all the other numbers went, but.
Okay. This one?
That's all I got.
I'm lost.
Would they share a driveway, these two houses?
No, they'd be completely separate. So.
So, you, you have two paved driveways next to each other on, on these plans, is that how I'm, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, there's a, there's a break right here, about 780.
Okay.
It runs all along here with pine trees planted.
Okay.
Most of these ones died, 'cause it's so dry last spring, summer.
Okay.
But this driveway's in, going all the way to this house, and then this funeral home, which is just, this is all gravel, not gravel, this is all blacktop right now from the funeral home.
Right.
We would remove all that, make it all grass.
And this would be the driveway?
This would be the driveway to a garage right here, one car garage. So, this is the exact area of the funeral home right now? That's the exact footprint, and we'd stay this exact footprint.
Would the front of the house be oriented towards Avenue A?
Yep, yeah, just as it is now.
Okay.
So, this is actually exactly how it is now, front of the house would have a walkway going straight out, the walkway's not right there now, it's just, just blacktop all the way around this whole building. This whole thing was just blacktop. The only thing that they, they never touched was the, the next door lot. Never got blacktopped, they blacktopped everything, because it did have a lot of guests.
And this house is not oriented towards Avenue A, right?
No.
Yeah, I know, I know, but it's.
So, way back when, they would park over here, at the apartment building, that nice brick building, that's where they would park, and they had a gate, they'd walk in. And I think that's just because everyone was friendly, and whatever it was, it worked, which is different now. So, yeah, so the driveway's right there, going up. So, there was, uh, this was always pavement here, and people would drive right here, 'cause they had a garage right here, so the garage was always under the house, but it was just one big piece of pavement. So, I put this buffer of trees in right here. No matter what, if it's gonna stay as one parcel, I wanted that buffer of trees, 'cause it just looks too poor.
So, in this, in this house on the funeral home, you could never build, like, a deck or something in the back, 'cause there's not enough room?
It's 40 feet, you have it. Yeah, so right from here to here, there's 42 feet, right to this buffer, to this line, this blue line is where we would predict to put the, the line. So, it's 40 feet, so there is a lot of space, you know, back there. And they would never be able to put a deck, 'cause it's ground level, so it would be a patio. So, basically, what's there now would exist, except for a steeper slope roof, so we can get that, just so it looks more livable, looks more homely, put a little front entry that kind of comes out, basically turn it into a house, instead of, it looks more, it looks like a house, but it's more, it looks like a funeral home and a house.
Are five and nine needed separately?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Question? At this time?
Gary? So, I just wanna make sure that I can understand the angle here. So, there's a house in the back, that's nothing to do with this, right? Then you have the funeral home that you want to change into the, into like a single family, is that correct?
Correct.
Then you wanna build a new one, a new home, adjacent to that, or you wanna do two new homes?
No, one.
One.
Yeah, there's a building lot right next to it.
Cool.
Yeah.
So, at the end, we're gonna have one more property, and then one that's gonna, the funeral home's gonna be changed to like a single family.
Yeah, so what we're, I think, today is for the, what the, this application is for, is the funeral home and the house, dividing that into two lots. I just wanted to spill the whole picture of what, you know, we were looking at.
And that's the house that's already been renovated last year?
Correct, yes.
Okay, Mr. Carmo, any comments on this particular application?
If the understanding is that Lot 23 and 24 are under the same ownership, then we need to address Section 17253.2, before we can move any further on the application, whichever way is addressed, whether it's to be in compliance with such code, or is it to get a variance from such code?
Or a variance from having a requirement to use the adjacent property?
Yes, you know, the advance from having to comply with this, with this code. The zoning board could issue a variance, saying, for whatever condition, or whatever reason, the applicant proposes to the board, the board can say, yeah, we're gonna allow you to continue with the proposed project, and give you a variance on that particular code section. And if he gets that variance, then, then we could proceed with a subdivision, in whichever way the, the applicant would like to present it to the board.
And in connection with Manny's saying, I just wanna note that on the, so we are obviously didn't review these thoroughly, because it's a pre-application meeting, but on the drawing, the illustrates, Nine Avenue A, the blue lines show some area of, Manny, 24 being incorporated into that, so.
Right.
What I'm saying is that I think, as part of the application as a whole, it would be easier for you to review if 24 was included within the entirety of the application, because the way it's drawn now, it, it's included by the fact of some of the area being transferred to it.
Well, what is, the, obviously, the buildings that are in 23 are grandfathered, and that was, they were there before the code that we're talking about, correct?
The building, yes, but regardless.